Regular meeting number 21 will now come to order. Please stand for the playing of the National Anthem.
As our city prepares for the primary election tomorrow, we ask you to inspire the electorate to nominate the best candidates to serve the citizens of our city. Public service is a grave responsibility and the women and men who offer themselves for office forever stand in need of your blessing and inspiration. At the same time, Lord, we remember in prayer our brothers and sisters in Baltimore and in the cities of our nation as we seek together solutions to the many issues that are of deep concern to all of us. We pray for reconciliation and mutual understanding as our law officers and citizens seek a better way of resolving the issues that cause division, worry, and alarm, especially in our cities. We also remember in prayer the people of Nepal recovering from the terrifying and destructive earthquake. May people of goodwill come to their aid in their hour of need. And most of all, Lord God, give us the capacity to be hopeful and optimistic that the many issues and problems that confront the members of our council and all of us as citizens of the world will be resolved through the unselfish generosity and mutual compassion for the common good of all citizens, especially the vulnerable and neglected members of our communities who in many ways suffer the most in these troubled times. We thank you for always hearing our prayer. Amen.
Harden Klein Mills, Paige Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the journal? Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Harden Klein Mills, Paige Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. This week's communications received by the City Clerk's Office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the City Bulletin. Are there any other communications to be read into the record?
Not at this time.
Are there any resolutions or announcements from members of council? Councilmember Harden.
Thank you, President Ginther. Last Monday evening, as we said at this dais, a great American city deteriorated into rioting and chaos. As a millennial, these were scenes that I had never witnessed before. They reminded me of the black and white videos of decades and decades ago. I speak this evening out of deep love for our city. I don't want us to convince ourselves that we don't have some of the same social issues of poverty, unemployment, poor schools, crime, and police community relations in some corners of our community that need the smallest spark to ignite as well. I believe we must continue to be as proactive as we can. We must keep our ears and our hearts to the ground and be responsive to the concerns of our more challenged neighborhoods. I am proud to serve on a council that has been doing just this. From President Ginther's work around infant mortality to President Pro Tem Mills' work to rid neighborhoods of blighted property, Councilmember Tyson has worked to bring access to healthcare to every corner of our city, and Councilmember Paley has worked with our judicial system, working with Judge Barrows and others to make it more caring and productive. Councilmember Page has worked to support recreation centers as beacons of hope and safe spaces in our neighborhoods, and Councilmember Klein's commitment to community policing and work to increase the diversity of our police force, and Chief Jacobs' proactive engagement of our neighborhoods with a series of community forums. Simply put, I want our community to know that we hear you, and we are working, and there's still more to do. Next week, I will convene the My Brothers Keepers Task Force in partnership with Mayor Coleman to report back to the city this fall on how we can leverage existing resources to better support the success of African-American males. We will host a series of youth summits this summer so that their voices are incorporated in the final report. We will focus on two primary areas: workforce development and safety, and we will have more information about this in the days ahead. I announce this because it's the beginning and not the end of a conversation in this city, in the state, and in our nation. I thank all of those who have come to City Hall to express your concerns and desires for this city and its future. Thank you, and please know that you have been and are being heard in this chamber. Many thanks, and I look forward to working with all of you to keep Columbus the best place to live, to work, and to raise a family for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Harden. Councilmember Klein?
Thank you, Council President. Well put, Councilmember Harden. Appreciate you sharing that with us. I do have a resolution, 66X-2015, to declare the week of May 3rd to May 9th, 2015, in Columbus, Ohio, to be Arson Prevention Week. I'd like to invite Chief Whiting and the men and women of Division of Fire. Are they here, Chief? And while they're on their way up, I move for passage.
Harden Klein Mills, Paige Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Had the pleasure of attending the contest, the artwork contest, for arson awareness, and I see some of the winners in the audience. Thanks for coming down to council. But arson is a crime. It's real. It happens in our community and happens across the United States. And so to bring awareness to this crime, and vehicle arson in particular, 14% of fires were vehicle fires and 7% of those were arson. They were intentionally set in the United States from 2008 to 2010. And 2/3rds of those intentionally set vehicle fires occurred during night, 9:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. So this is a real crime in our community, and we appreciate the men and women of Division of Fire for bringing the attention and working with arson prevention to this issue, and to all the men, or the teachers of Columbus Public Schools that teach the wonderful students that won, and all the parents that provided them with the opportunity to participate. We certainly appreciate that, but the floor is yours.
Well, first of all, we'd like to thank you for bringing this resolution because arson is a serious crime that affects everybody in our community, our firefighters, everybody, and it has a negative impact. As you said, 14% of the fires are arson-related for vehicle fires that we have, and a lot of those are to cover up a crime or a theft, anything in that nature, or for insurance purposes. But this year, again, we had another successful campaign. We had a lot of students do some beautiful artwork, and I will tell you, our investigators and everybody that was involved in the selection process, it was really challenging because we had great artwork and, as you said, a number of our winners are in the audience. Their posters are going to go up on billboards around central Ohio, and hopefully this will bring more awareness to the fact of arson and auto fires, and we'll have a lot more positive response by people in the community as they go out and they observe things in their neighborhood.
I see some of the winners. Why don't some of the winners and runners-up please come forward and just say their name? Come on up. You can come up to the stand. I told them when they received their awards that my talent in high school was being tall. So I had no talent, and here they have all this great artistic talent. So go ahead and say your name and maybe the school you go to.
Tamari Cambro, and I'm from Champion Middle School.
I'm Reyna Garcia, and I'm from Champion Middle School.
Owen Dempsey, a student at Columbus Alternative High School.
And then why don't the teachers and the parents stand up as well, and let's give them a round of applause.[596.16][596.16](APPLAUSE). Thank you, Chief Whiting. Any questions or comments from my councilmember colleagues? All right. Well, I have a resolution for you. Before I give it to you, I'd just like to give a shout-out to the men and women of our Division of Fire for the massive four-alarm fire that was on Marion Road a couple days ago. Half the division was down there at one point, and, you know, every time we see that, we know that while we're running away, they're running in, and they're keeping us safe. So let's give a round of applause to the men and women.[638.12][638.12](APPLAUSE).
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you again. Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations again. Thanks. President Pro Tem Mills. Councilmember Page.
Yes, thank you, President Ginther. Tonight, I have two resolutions. The first one, 118X-2015, and I would like to ask Dr. Doug Knutson to come up to the podium, and while he's on his way up, I would like to move for passage.
Second. Harden Klein Mills, Paige Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. Thank you, Doctor. The resolution tonight is to honor and recognize the Coleman-Columbus Race for the Cure and the Susan G. Coleman Race for the Cure Series for raising funds to support research to end breast cancer once and for all. Dr. Knutson, we would like to thank you for your passion and your dedication to cure breast cancer, and we, as Columbus City Council members, have a beautiful resolution in support of the Coleman-Columbus Race for the Cure and the Susan G. Coleman Race for the Cure Series. And we thank you again for the work that you're doing and for raising funds to support and help cure breast cancer amongst women. Thank you.
Thank you.[746.32][746.32](APPLAUSE).
Yes.
Council President Ginther, Councilmember Page, and members of City Council, I thank you very much for letting me be here today. As you mentioned, the Coleman-Columbus Race for the Cure is actually the largest race for the cure in the United States, and that wouldn't be the case without the support of City Council and the entire Columbus community. I want to take this time to thank Mayor Michael Coleman as well for his support over the last 15 years. It's fitting that his last race for the cure is, as mayor, is the largest in the country, once again putting Columbus on the map. Since 1993 and through your support, Coleman-Columbus has funded more than $25 million to support local breast health programs in our 30-county service area and national breast cancer research. In fact, Susan G. Coleman has been engaged in every major research program that has led to an advance in treating this disease in the last 30 years. And just last week, Coleman announced that an important research breakthrough made possible in part by more than $1 million in Coleman funding was a discovery of a new breast cancer susceptibility gene that will pave the way for future discoveries to allow women to assess their risk and take action. The support Coleman-Columbus receives from our city, its supporters, and our corporate partners makes these discoveries possible. I'm personally very committed to Coleman's mission. My sister was diagnosed at the age of 27. She was determined to win but had a recurrence at 37, and our family lost her when she was only 39 years old. I'm committed to doing absolutely everything I can to ensure no other family has to go through what we went through, and that's why I'm proud to be the president of the board of Coleman-Columbus and part of our great Columbus community. Together, we're making a big difference in the lives of thousands of women and families here, and we all look forward to the day that we can say we took part in ending breast cancer forever. But that day isn't here yet, and until it is, I urge all of you to join us on May 16th for the largest Coleman Race for the Cure in the country. So we've also brought you some yard signs, and if you guys want, you can replace your campaign signs with these. We also have some race posters for you and hope you wear your pink ribbons proudly for the rest of the time until the race comes. So thank you very much. Thanks.
Thank you, Doctor, and I want to briefly read the resolution. To honor and recognize the Coleman-Columbus Race for the Cure and the Susan G. Coleman Race for the Cure Series for raising funds to support research to end breast cancer once and for all. Whereas, the Columbus affiliate of Susan G. Coleman Race for the Cure recently directed $1.4 million to fund 21 programs that will provide thousands of local men and women with vital breast health education, screening, and treatment throughout the next year. And whereas, the Coleman-Columbus Race for the Cure is now in its 22nd year and has grown from 875 participants to nearly 40,000 walkers and runners, making it the largest 5K road race in Ohio and the second-largest Coleman race in the United States. And whereas, the Coleman-Columbus Race for the Cure will take place on Saturday, May 16th, at 8:00 a.m., and whereas, the money raised will be used to support local programs in Coleman-Columbus's 30-county service area, including education, breast health screening, and treatment. Funds will also be used to support global research to find cures for breast cancer. And whereas, we encourage everyone to think pink this month and support the effort to end breast cancer now. Now, therefore, be resolved by the Council of the City of Columbus that this council recognizes the runners, walkers, and supporters of Coleman-Columbus Race for the Cure and the Susan G. Coleman Race for the Cure Series. Further, we honor our community's breast cancer survivors, those who have succumbed to the disease, and the family and friends who stood by them for their determination and courage. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you.[1002.94][1002.94](APPLAUSE).
I now have Resolution 119X-2015, and I would like to ask Tracy Nahada to come to the podium. Resolution 119X-2015 is to honor and recognize the 30th anniversary of the Alpha Psi Lambda Fraternity Incorporated, and I would like to move for passage at this time.
Harden Klein Mills, Paige Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. And whereas, Alpha Psi Lambda Fraternity, Inc. is a collegiate Greek letter fraternity that is coed in Latino interest and has been an inclusive organization regardless of race, creed, or national origin and/or orientation. And whereas, Alpha Psi Lambda sponsors programs providing community service, social welfare, and academic scholarship in all of its respective communities and campuses while promoting Latino cultures, and has adopted the Boys and Girls Club of America as its national philanthropy. And whereas, Alpha Psi Lambda has continued to inspire leadership through education, community service, and cultural understanding for the past three decades. Now, therefore, be resolved by the Council of the City of Columbus that this council does hereby honor and recognize Alpha Psi Lambda Incorporated and its members as they celebrate their 30th anniversary.[1113.83][1113.83](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, President Ginther, and Councilwoman Page, and the rest of City Council. My name is Tracy Nahad, and I'm here on behalf of the members of Alpha Psi Lambda, the fraternity's national president, Michelle Medei, to express our membership's appreciation for recognizing the fraternity's 30th-year anniversary of its founding at the Ohio State University. In 1985, 13 noble men and women set out to form the first coed Latino interest organization dedicated to the education and development of its membership through leadership, cultural awareness, and community service. Over the past 30 years, Alpha Psi Lambda National Incorporated has expanded to include over 2,300 members and 25 collegiate chapters in Ohio, Illinois, Indiana, Texas, Florida, Kentucky, South Carolina, and with colonies in California and Michigan. The City of Columbus is a city of growing diversity and a city that has chosen to embrace this diversity and leverage it as an asset in the city's success. Therefore, it is an honor for us to have Columbus City Council recognize Alpha Psi Lambda for its accomplishments and commitment to Latino leadership, academic achievement, and cultural awareness. I'd also like to take a moment to recognize some of my brothers and sisters here today: Ezra Escudero, and Ramona Reyes, and somewhere around here, Emerald Hernandez. As part of the fraternity's 30th-year anniversary, its Alpha Chapter and Alumni members from central Ohio have planned for a weekend of events from June 26th through the 28th, focusing on our fraternity's core principles, where we expect to host upwards of 300 members from across the country. Events will include a scholarship 5K run walk at General Park to benefit Latino students Ohio-based nonprofit Echo for scholarships, a national House of Delegates meeting for undergraduate chapters, and a Masquerade Gala at the Ohio Union promoting professional networking and recognizing student and alumni leadership and community service. So again, thank you all very much for your recognition of the fraternity. Thanks.
And thank you for the work that you all are doing in the community. Any questions or comments? Thank you.[1259.83][1259.83](APPLAUSE). And I would now like to recognize some of our young city leaders. If I could have the following students come up to the front with Ms. Sherry Lynn Nguyen and Ms. Cece Harris. We have Lucy Bishop, Cory Dupree, Erica Ellis, Nathaniel Johnson, Maya Mack, Mary O'Toole, Adija Stevenson, Courtney Stewart, Jeffrey Stewart.
Hello.
And welcome, city leaders. Can y'all briefly tell us your names so I know who you are?
I'm Lucy Bishop, and I'm in 6th grade at Trinity Catholic School in Grandview.
I'm Kohara Dupree. I'm in 7th grade, and I go to Metro Early College High School.
I'm Erica Ellis, and I'm in 7th grade, and I go to Ames Middle School.
I'm Mary O'Toole. I'm in 8th grade at Trinity Catholic School.
I'm William Wilder, and I go to Sherwood Middle School, and I'm in 8th grade.
I'm Adija Stevenson. I'm in 6th grade, and I go to Livingston Elementary.
Awesome. And I just want to briefly talk about our young city leaders and the program. It was established in 2012 by Mayor Coleman, and the mission of the City Leaders Program is to develop the city leaders of tomorrow by providing an orientation of the City of Columbus to include science, technology, arts, history, education, health and nutrition, social services, law enforcement, safety, government, economic development, and community service through hands-on learning opportunities and meetings and mentoring by current city leadership. Eligible students are in grades 6 through 8 and ages 10 through 15, and they will actually be graduating this Saturday. Is that correct? And they will soon be taking all of our places up here. So thank you for the work that you're doing. Thank you for being awesome young leaders in our community, and I would like to thank our two adults for the work they're doing as well. Would you like to make any comments?
Just, thank you. Council President Ginther, Councilmember Page, members of council, glad to be back. Seems like I can't get away from City Council, but I'm just excited about the opportunities that are being presented. This is a great group of young people. We had 24 city leaders that were elected this year. 18 are going to graduate. Unfortunately, the others just couldn't stay up with the curriculum, but we hope that at some point, maybe, they can look at other opportunities. We do have our graduation this Saturday, which is the culmination of their eight months of learning. It is at the Columbus Police Academy at 12:00 noon, so we invite anyone who wants to come out and see their performance, their presentations. They do take on leadership projects, and they will be presenting their projects during that time period. Also, we are in the new application process for new city leaders, which expires June the 19th. I have some applications I'll make sure your analysts get so that maybe you can have copies for any of your constituency. We'll make sure that it's on our webpage, which is columbus.gov/citleaders. But I just want to acknowledge Director McKnight for the opportunity to have us under Recreation and Parks, and definitely acknowledge the mayor for all of his excitement and ignition under this effort. And many of you have been out with us. You've sat through our meetings and had time with our city leaders, so you know this group is a 3.5 and above, and only a 3.0 is required. Cece Harris is a phenomenal program coordinator for this program. So I just wanted to applaud their efforts, and thank you for allowing us to come here and be with you today. And we also have some backpacks for you that we'll get to you.
Thank you. Yes, Councilwoman Tyson?
Thank you, Councilwoman Page. To Sherry Lynn and to Cece, thank you for providing leadership to these young adults, and just really appreciate you for what you're doing. I want to say thank you to the parents who have permitted their children to be in this program for eight months. Certainly, I know that each of them have a lot of schoolwork to do and other assignments, but however, they've made the time and the commitment to be a part of this program. So I want to say to the young people who are graduating on Saturday, thank you so much for being a part of the program. Thank you for learning a lot about the city, but also sharing your knowledge about things that we need to be doing as a city. The only way we're going to continue to grow is to be able to hear from our young leaders. So I appreciate you for being in this program and for sharing with the city, and just wish you the very best as you continue to move forward. Have a great summer, and again, thank you for providing your leadership to our city.
Thank you. We have some certificates for the students signed by all the members of council, and thank you all for coming this evening. Thank you.[1599.75][1599.75](APPLAUSE).
Councilmember Paley? Councilmember Tyson?
Yes, I have one resolution this evening. I'm going to ask Rachel Martin to walk towards the podium, and she's the executive director for NAMI of Franklin County. And the resolution is 0124X-2014. It is to recognize the importance of mental health awareness and to celebrate May of 2015 as the National Mental Health Month. Whereas, mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and whereas everyone experiences the times of difficulty and stress in their lives, and whereas the National Alliance on Mental Health Illness of Ohio was created in 1982 by a small, dedicated group of family members and to provide mutual support, education, and advocacy for individuals and families affected by serious brain disorders. Whereas, NAMI has an outstanding history of affecting public policy and legislation regarding care and resources for people with serious mental illness, and whereas, mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation. Whereas, prevention is an effective way to reduce the burden of mental health conditions, and whereas, with effective treatment, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full and productive lives. Whereas, May has been designated as the National Mental Health Month, a time dedicated to focusing national attention on the importance of mental health and to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health, and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Columbus. This council does hereby recognize and celebrate 2015 as National Mental Health Month in the City of Columbus. I move for passage.
Second. Harden Klein Mills, Paige Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. Ms. Martin, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you, President Ginther, Councilwoman Tyson, and other council members. It is an honor to accept this resolution on behalf of NAMI Franklin County and the Community Conversations on Mental Health Partners. May is Mental Health Month, and there are several big, huge events planned. Text, Talk, and Act is a national dialogue for ages 12 to 24 to talk, text, talk, and act about the act about the importance of taking care of their mental health. This event will be held at the Columbus Public Health Department on Thursday, May the 7th from 6 o'clock to 8 o'clock PM. Also, this week, we are going to be providing mental health first aid training, which is a public health training that introduces participants to the risk factors and warning signs of mental illness. These trainings will be held this week for pastors and youth leaders. The last thing that I'd like to discuss is the Power of Hope Conversation about recovery from mental illness, addiction, and trauma, which will be held also at the Columbus Public Health on Tuesday, May the 19th from 6 o'clock to 8. If you have any questions about mental health or if we can help in any way, please feel free to contact NAMI Franklin County at 614-501-6264 or www.namifc.org. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Martin, for coming down. Just want to share that one in four individuals will experience some sort of mental health illness within their lifetime, one in four. And that's why this is so important. The CDC is saying that by 2020, it will be the second leading cause of disabilities within the United States. So mental health, depression will be the second leading cause. And so I just appreciate the work that you've been doing on behalf of residents within Franklin County. I'm glad that you're mentioning the Talks, Text, and Act that we'll be having this Thursday. It is certainly an approach for our young people. It's an innovative approach that will combine the text messaging, social media, and face-to-face dialogue to make it possible for young people to talk about mental health problems and how to help friends who may be experiencing those health problems. So far, thousands of young people in all 50 states will be gathered in these groups on this Thursday to be able to do Talk, Text, and Act. So I thank you for your leadership in regards to the mental health and just appreciate you. And then again, I move for passage.
Harden Klein Mills, Page Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. Thank you. I also just have one announcement. Tomorrow, which is Tuesday, May the 5th, at 4:00 PM, I'll be convening a committee hearing for Finance, Health, and Human Services and Workforce Development to hear legislation that will appear on city council's agenda for the coming weeks. And the hearing will be held here in council chambers. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. There are any comments from our elected officials, the city auditor, city attorney? Judge Barrows, anything from the courts?
No, thank you, Judge Barrows.
Any requests by members of council for the removal of an ordinance or resolution from the consent action portion of the agenda? Seeing none, may we now have a motion to waive reading of the titles of 30-day legislation by the city clerk? Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Harden Klein Mills, Page Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. Will the clerk now read into the record the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda for first reading?
Technology Committee Ordinance 1023-2015. Public Utilities Committee Ordinance is 754, 755, and 948-2015. Development Committee Ordinance 1133-2015. Rules and Reference Committee Ordinance is 1145 and 2169-2014.
The following ordinances appear on our agenda as consent actions. Will the clerk now read the ordinance numbers of each into the record?
Finance Committee Ordinance 1034-2015. Health and Human Services Committee Ordinance 1011 and 1081-2015. Public Service and Transportation Committee Ordinance is 1031, 1041, 1075, 1153, 1156-2015. Public Safety Committee Ordinance is 1021, 1047, 1063-2015. Technology Committee Ordinance is 650, 916, 922, 973, and 1001-2015. Public Utilities Committee Ordinance is 956, 1022, 1106, 1135, and 1144-2015. Development Committee Ordinance is 1014, 1115, 1136, 1137, 1139, 1157, 1233-2015. Recreation and Parks Committee Ordinance is 1042, 1074, 1102, 1116, 1150-2015. Judiciary and Court Administration Committee Ordinance 1119-2015.
Thank you. We do have one speaker on the consent agenda this evening. Mr. Nathaniel George Wilkins. Mr. Wilkins, welcome to council chambers. If you'd come forward to the podium and share your name, address, any organizations you represent. You've signed up to speak in support of 1157-2015. You have three minutes.
1612 Arlington Avenue, Mr. Nathaniel George Wilkins, the chairman of sole vacant abandoned property in North London there. I just want to know what will this property be used for and I want to know how long it's been sitting in the land bank. Thank you for your time.
Any information, director Shaw, that you can provide regarding this?
Thank you, President Ginther, members of council. This property will be rehabbed and used as a rental property. I do not know how long we've had it in the land bank.
If you or a member of your team could follow up with Mr. Wilkins, provide that information, I'd appreciate it.
We have to.
Any additional questions or comments from council members regarding the consent agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion for approval of these items designated as consent actions? Is there a second? Clerk call the roll by voice.
Harden. Klein. Mills. Page. Paley.
Yes, with the exception of ordinance number 1011-2015, for which I'm abstaining.
Tyson. President Ginther.
Yes, consent agenda carries. We now proceed with the second reading of 30-day table in the emergency legislation. First committee is the Health and Human Services Committee. Councilmember Tyson chairs that committee. Madam Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I have ordinance number 1012-2015. It's to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to establish a purchase order with Moore Medical LLC for the purchase of flu mist QIV nasal spray for Columbus Public Health to waive the relevant provisions of the Columbus City Code related to the competitive bidding and to authorize expenditure of $57,000 from the Health Special Revenue Fund and to pay the cost thereof and to declare an emergency. Each flu season, the immunizations program at Columbus Public Health offers flu shots to residents of Columbus and Franklin County. It has been determined that the Columbus Public Health is eligible to purchase flu mist QIV nasal spray from Moore Medical LLC for $57,000 on the public health entity agreement, which is the best pricing available in the state of Ohio for this vaccine. And thus, we're asking the waiving of competitive bidding. This flu season, the flu season this past year, we had, and from October of 14 through May through April 25th of 2015, is nearly double that of the previous two flu seasons combined. Columbus and Franklin County have had 996 flu hospitalizations compared to 512 in 2013 and 486 in 2014. So it's imperative that we get this flu mist and hopefully, we will have fewer hospitalizations and fewer people getting the flu in 2015. And I move for passage.
Harden Klein Mills, Page Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. The last ordinance in this committee is ordinance 1032-2015. It's to authorize and direct the Board of Health to enter into a contract with Columbus Neighbor Health Center, Inc. for the provision of medical director services to authorize expenditure of $30,000 from the Health Special Revenue Fund to waive the relevant provisions of Columbus City Code related to competitive bidding and to declare an emergency. This contract will provide medical director services for the Women's Health and Family Planning Clinic at Columbus Public Health. The Women's Health and Family Planning Clinic will provide reproductive and family planning services to women of our community, which includes annual exams, pregnancy tests, reproductive life planning, contraception, counseling, and sexually transmitted infection testing. The medical director is oversight and supervision of the clinical practice given by the advanced practice registered nurses, a chart review, review and approval of medical protocols and policies, and medical consultation and consultation regarding clinic operations. And the medical director also provides direct client care. I move for passage.
Harden.
Oh, by voice.
Klein. Mills. Page. Paley. Tyson.
Yes.
President Ginther.
Thank you. That's all the legislation I have this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. Our next committee is the Public Service and Transportation Committee. Councilmember Harden chairs that committee. Mr. Chairman, floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther. This evening in Public Service and Transportation Committee, we have ordinance 1068-2015 to authorize the Finance and Management Department to enter into contract with Altech Industries for the purchase of aerial trucks and training to waive the competitive bidding requirements of Columbus City Code and to authorize the expenditure of $462,996 from the Streets and Highways Bonds Fund and to declare an emergency. This is, we're waiving the bidding because we were trying to buy three specialty hybrid trucks and I'll let Director Davies speak more on that.
Thank you, Chairman Harden, President Ginther, members of council. We're requesting a bid waiver on this legislation. Three bids were received. None of the bidders met all of the specifications. This was the second time around we bid these trucks and we wanted to move forward in the purchasing. Altech Industries was the only bidder for the larger 36-foot aerial truck and the low bidder for the two 29-foot aerial trucks. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Director Davies. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Harden Klein Mills, Page Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, we have ordinance 1143-2015 to amend the 2015 capital improvements budget to appropriate funds within the Streets and Highways Improvement Carryover Fund, to authorize and direct the city auditor to transfer funds in appropriation within the Streets and Highways Bonds Fund and the Street and Highway Improvement Carryover Fund, to authorize and direct the city auditor to transfer funds between the Streets and Highways Bonds Fund, the Streets and Highways Improvement Carryover Fund, and the Federal State Highway Engineering Fund. To appropriate funds within the Federal State Highway Engineering Fund, to authorize and direct the city auditor to transfer funds in appropriation within the Recreation and Parks GO Bonds Fund, to authorize and direct the city auditor to transfer funds between the Recreation and Parks GO Bonds Funds and the Recreation and Parks Grants Fund. To appropriate the funds, to appropriate funds within the Recreation and Park Grants Funds, to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into a contract with Complete General Construction Company for the bridge rehabilitation, Fifth Avenue over Scioto River, to expend up to $9,723,158.17 from the Federal State Highway Engineering Fund and the Recreation and Parks Grants Fund for contract and construction administration and inspection services in connection with the bridge rehabilitation, Fifth Avenue over Scioto River project, and to declare an emergency. Well, that was the longest title I've ever read. But there's so much in there because we are working with our partners at the state and with MORPC and even with Director McKnight and Chair Page and the Recreation Parks Department on a new bridge over the Scioto River. The city will invest $4.4 million of the $9.7 million project while ODOT will contribute $2.4 million and MORPC will contribute $2.2 million to these funds. Quite also, we're excited that we will move this process as fast as we can. We're going to have a quick turnaround on this so that we can have these, this bridge, brand-new bridge open with bike lanes and I think that's what Recreation and Parks is bringing to the table. Director, do you have any other comments on this?
Chairman Harden, President Ginther, members of council, I think you covered it pretty well. The project will add a shared use path, sidewalk curbs, ADA compliant ramps, traffic signal improvements, and we're just very excited for the project. And it is an expedited construction project that should be completed and the road closures will last less than 120 days, hopefully.
Thank you, Director. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Harden Klein Mills, Page Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
That is all we have in Public Service and Transportation this evening. Thank you, President Ginther.
Thank you, Councilmember Harden. Our next committee is the Public Safety Committee. Councilmember Klein chairs that committee. Mr. Chairman, floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. In Public Safety, 1049-2015 to authorize an appropriation of $1,316,616.71 from the unappropriate balance of the Law Enforcement Contraband Seizure Fund to the Division of Police to purchase equipment, supplies, and services and to declare an emergency. Deputy Director?
President Ginther, Chairman Klein, members of council, this is pretty much an annual appropriation for the Division of Police in the seizure fund, actually, a couple seizure funds. This ordinance provides a large amount of equipment and training supplies, much of it specialty equipment for the Division of Police with proceeds that are derived from typically drug arrests, which money then flows back to the Division of Police. There's some Homeland Security items in here, personal protective equipment, office furniture, and some maintenance agreements. So in that sense, it's a little bit of an omnibus ordinance and as I said, pretty much maybe have a smaller one later this year. Appreciate council's consideration of this ordinance this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments for the deputy director? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Harden Klein Mills, Page Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Moving on to Technology, 1015-2015, a first move to remove it from the table?
Harden. Klein. Mills. Page. Paley. Tyson. President Ginther.
To authorize the Finance and Management Director to enter into a contract for the option to purchase business-class cable television services, business-class phone services, business-class data services, to authorize the expenditure of $1 to establish the contract from the general fund, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of Chapter 329 of the Columbus City Code, to enter into a new three-year term contract so the city will receive the best pricing for upcoming planned projects, and to declare an emergency. Deputy Director?
President Ginther, Chairman Klein, members of council. To continue using these services, we've been using them for years throughout the city from all these different services listed here. It would be manifestly impractical to replace all this equipment and this embedded cabling throughout the city. So with that, we move for, we appreciate your support.
Any questions or comments? I move for passage by voice vote.
Harden. Klein. Mills. Page. Paley. Tyson. President Ginther.
And that's all I have, Council President.
Thank you, Councilmember Klein. Next committee is the Development Committee. President Pro Tim Mills chairs that committee. Madam Chair, floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther. Tonight, in the Development Committee, have the following ordinance, beginning with ordinance 0998-2015, to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a guaranteed maximum reimbursement and construction contribution agreement and future amendments for contribution agreements if needed with Nationwide Realty Investors, LTD, and to accept funding for a public infrastructure improvement project pursuant to Section 186 of the Columbus City Charter for the construction of public infrastructure improvements in connection with the Department of Public Utilities' power duck improvements in the Arena West area of downtown Columbus in an amount up to $1,262,669.36. in the Arena West area of downtown Columbus in an amount up to $1,262,669.36. To authorize the city auditor to deposit the funding contribution from NRI into the Street and Highway Improvements Fund and to declare an emergency. First, I'd like to move to amend as submitted to the clerk.
Harden Klein Mills, Paige Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, I'd like to move for passage as amended.
Harden Klein Mills, Paige Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, I have ordinance 1054-2015 to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a jobs growth incentive agreement with G&amp;J Pepsi-Cola Bottlers, Inc., equal to 25% of the amount of new income tax withheld on employees for a term up to five years in consideration of the company's proposed investment of $12 million and the creation of 14 new full-time permanent positions. Just want to, a few highlights about G&amp;J. In 1925, the owner of the Grand Pop Bottling Company in Cincinnati decided to put the company on the market. Nell and Walter Gross and Esther and Isaac Jarson decided to purchase the company and become equal partners. Today, G&amp;J Pepsi-Cola Bottlers, Inc. is privately owned company comprised of seven franchises which distribute Pepsi-Cola brand products in Athens, Columbus, Hamilton, Portsmouth, Ripley, Zanesville, Ohio, and Lexington, Kentucky. The company is headquartered in Cincinnati, Ohio, and operates distributor centers in Chillicothe, Hillsboro, Ohio, as well as Winchester and Harrisburg, Kentucky. The company distributes Pepsi brand products as well as packages under Lipton Ocean Spray, Starbucks, and other labels, as well as the Cadbury Dr. Pepper beverages. The entire G&amp;J franchise employs over 1,600 employees and has over 300 beverage routes. The company purchased a vacant distribution warehouse consisting of approximately 25,000 square feet at 1133 Gibbard Avenue last summer, and recently made a corporate decision to begin manufacturing its own plastic bottles instead of using a third-party vendor out of state. G&amp;J Pepsi-Cola Bottlers is proposing to create the 14 new full-time permanent positions with an estimated annual payroll of approximately $565,974 towards this new line of advanced manufacturing here in the city of Columbus. If there are no other comments or questions, I'd like to move for passage.
Harden Klein Mills, Paige Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
I'd like to move to the Environment Committee, President Ginther, with your permission. In the Environment Committee, I have ordinance 1070-2015 to authorize the Finance and Management Director to enter into contracts and a purchase order for two 16-feet flatbed trucks powered by compressed natural gas to request a waiver of competitive bidding requirements of Chapter 329 of Columbus City Code, to authorize expenditure of $150,000 within the Refuge GO Bonds Fund and to declare an emergency. The Department of Public Service and Fleet Management recognize the need to replace older trucks and its fleet beyond the useful service life of a vehicle. The city will establish one-time contracts for the purchase of the two trucks with CNG. The terms of the proposed contracts are for the date of execution by the city and up to including manufacturer's build-out date. If there are no other comments or questions, I'd like to move for passage.
Harden Klein Mills, Paige Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
President Ginther, I have a couple of pieces of legislation and rules and reference. May I move to rules and reference?
Please.
Thank you. Tonight in rules and reference, I have ordinance 0618-2014 to amend Section 330.13, letter M of the Columbus Zoning Code Title 33 to update the definition of manufacturer home to be consistent with the Ohio Revised Code. This specifically affecting the Columbus zoning code is consistent definition found in the ORC, and the code change corrects identified deficiencies found in this definition while not altering the scope or level of regulation contained in the Columbus zoning code. If there are no other comments or questions, I'd like to move for passage.
Harden Klein Mills, Paige Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, I have ordinance 1568-2014 to amend Section 4113.51 of Title 41, the Columbus Building Code, to require permits and/or registrations for tents and membrane structures larger than 400 square feet, increasing the permit and review threshold from 200 square feet in keeping with the changes in the statewide Ohio Building Code. This increase is based upon the changes in the Ohio Building Code ensuring a consistency and mandatory statewide building codes. The Columbus Building Commission voted to recommend approval of this building code revision at its monthly public meeting on January 21st, 2014. In addition to that, we held a hearing regarding this change and the other changes related to the building code. If there are no other comments or questions, I'd like to move for passage.
Harden Klein Mills, Paige Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
That's all I have this evening.
Thank you, President Pro Tem Mills. Our next committee is the Recreation and Parks Committee. Councilmember Page chairs that committee. Madam Chair, floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther. Tonight in Recreation and Parks, we have ordinance 1254-2015 to authorize the city auditor to appropriate and transfer $50,000 between the Jobs Growth Fund and the Neighborhood Initiatives Fund, to authorize the city auditor to appropriate and transfer $50,000 from the Neighborhood Initiatives Fund to the Recreation and Parks Operating Fund, to authorize the city auditor to appropriate $50,000 in the Recreation and Parks Operating Fund for expansion of the summer food program and to declare an emergency. I would like to encourage my colleagues to adopt ordinance 1254-2015, which will allow us to expand our summer feeding program and to feed more kids throughout the summer. At this time, I move for passage.
Second. Harden Klein Mills, Paige Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you, Councilmember Page. Our final committee this evening is Judiciary and Court Administration. Councilmember Paley chairs that committee. Madam Chair, floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President Ginther. In the Judiciary and Court Administration this evening, I have ordinance 0889-2015 to authorize the municipal court clerk to renew the contract with Huntington National Bank for bank and credit card services for the municipal court's clerk's office, to authorize expenditure of $90,000 from the general fund and to declare an emergency. If there are no questions or comments, I move to remove from the table by voice.
Harden. Yes. Klein. Yes. Mills.
Yes.
Paige.
Yes.
Paley.
Yes.
Tyson.
Yes.
President Ginther.
I move for passage by voice.
Harden.
Yes.
Klein. Yes. Mills.
Yes.
Paige.
Yes.
Paley.
Yes.
Tyson.
Yes.
President Ginther.
Next, I have ordinance 0906-2015 to authorize the city attorney to enter into the first year of a three-year contract with LexisNexis, the Division of Reed Xiver Incorporated, for the provision of online legal research services, to authorize the expenditure of $55,675.20 from the general fund in the way of the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Harden Klein Mills, Paige Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you, Council President Ginther. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Paley. Is there anything else to come before council this evening? We have two non-agenda speakers that we will take momentarily, and we will reconvene for zoning at 6:30. Nothing else come before us? I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Clerk call the roll.
Harden Klein Mills, Paige Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
We stand adjourned. We'll take non-agenda speakers momentarily. Regular meeting number 22 will now come to order. Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the journal? Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Harden Klein Mills, Paige Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Any communications and reports received by the city clerk?
No, they're not.
Any first readings of 30-day legislation?
No, they're not.
We will now go to the zoning committee. I chair that committee. All members serve on the committee. This evening in zoning, we have 1024-2015 to rezone 5526 West Broad Street, 43228, being 1.79 plus or minus acres located on the north side of West Broad Street, 360 plus or minus feet west of Hilliard Rome Road, from CPD, Commercial Plan Development District, to LC4 Limited Commercial District. The applicant is Mouth of Wilson, LLC, care of Jeffrey L. Brown, Attorney Smith &amp; Hale, LLC, 37 West Broad Street, Suite 460, Columbus, Ohio, 43215. The proposed use is expansion of Retail Garden Center. Development Commission recommended approval. Westland Area Commission recommended approval. City Department's recommendation is approval. Any questions or comments regarding this legislation? If not, first would request to amend to emergency?
Second.
Clerk call the roll.
Harden Klein Mills, Paige Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Amended to emergency and finally move for passage. Clerk call the roll.
Harden Klein Mills, Paige Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Passed. Next is 1062-2015 to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3356.03(c)(4) permitted uses, 3309.14 height district, 3312.49(c), minimum number of parking spaces required, 3321.05(b)(1)2 vision clearance, and 3356.11(c)(4) district setback lines of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at 780 Park Street, 43215, to permit a multi-unit residential and office development with reduced development standards in the (c)(4) commercial district. Are any questions or concerns? I request to table this legislation for two weeks. Clerk call the roll.
Harden Klein Mills, Paige Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Legislation is table. Is there anything else to come before council this evening in the zoning committee? Not? I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Seven minutes.
Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Harden Klein Mills, Paige Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. We stand adjourned.